All right, thank you for joining us this afternoon. We welcome you to Pasco School Board of Directors regularly scheduled study session. We only call it a study session this afternoon because when we as directors meet in more than groups of two, we need to have an open public meeting, which are usually regularly scheduled board meetings, special board meetings, or study sessions. So, we're calling it a study session, but really this is a celebration. And we're here to celebrate our retirees and we're excited. We know that after Mr. Shane Eddinger reads the stories here, the board and everyone else in here will be moved. And we know that every time we hear these stories, you guys inspire us to do the volunteer work that we do. And teachers and students and administrators and district staff are what make this happen. Really important work, really inspiring, and every year we're excited to sit down, hear these stories, and celebrate you guys. So, thank you for all the work that you've done. Many of you have worked for the district for many years. And with that alternative...oh, let me say one more thing. We are recording this back here, our study sessions, and it will be broadcast, I believe, on Channel 191 Charter Cable TV. If you can't find that, and you have loved ones, or friends, or neighbors that you'd like to send this to, you can find it on YouTube by searching Pasco Schools. So, you can send that link to your loved ones or your family, and they can hear the kind words that are read about you, and they can celebrate with us from afar. So, thank you, Mr. Shane Eddinger.
Well, good afternoon, Board President Lerman, Superintendent Whitney, and members of the board. Today, I'm honored to present to you our colleagues and friends who have retired or are retiring in the 2016-2017 school year. This year, we have 40 retirees who represent a combined total of 933 years of service to Pasco students and families and this community. One of the folks here alone is responsible for 40 years of continuous service to Pasco students. For the sake of brevity, I won't talk about how highly trained and educated these people are, or how hard they've worked to continue to improve themselves for the good of Pasco kids. But I can tell you that we have some Wildcats, some Huskies, some Eagles, and as always, plenty of Cougars here tonight. We even have a Golden Gopher in our ranks this year of retirees. As we celebrate their careers and accomplishments, you will note some recurring themes: hard work, caring, compassion, and dedication. And the word you'll hear most often, however, is "students," because at the heart of each of these stories is an unwavering commitment to provide the best education possible to the children of Pasco. So, if you're here tonight, when I read your name, please come forward to be recognized and to shake hands and hug with the folks of the board members and to receive your Crystal Apple. First, the first one on, name on our list is Cha'nam Amick. She was a custodian with us for 26 years. Ina Ames, a teacher with us for 34 years, all of those years at Pasco High School as a math teacher. James Arrel. James was a custodian with us for 12 years, spending some time at Pasco High and Ochoa Middle School. Diana Baker. Diana Baker ended her career with us as a librarian at McLean Talk STEM Elementary. She also worked at McLaughlin Middle School. She was with the school district for 11 years. Rosalva Bogart was a paralegal, or I'm sorry, a bilingual paraeducator and a secretary for 30 years, and spent a lot of that time as the Athletic Department Secretary at Pasco High School. Randy Buer. I saw Randy, so I know he's here. Randy Buer has been with us for eight years. When Randy Buer joined the team at Pasco High School in 2009, he was already a seasoned veteran teacher with a passion for music. He started his teaching career in Kennewick in 1977, but his life adventure also included a 20-year stop in Ketchikan, Alaska, before a move back to the mid-Columbia. Randy has led the band program at PHS since his arrival and has served as the Chair of the Visual and Performing Arts Department for several years. He's also been an active leader of the summer music program and has helped to nurture blossoming young musicians at Robinson, McGee, Chess, and Twain Elementarys over the years. Randy often heard praise from his colleagues, including this anecdote from one of his evaluations: "Walking into any of Mr. Buer's band classes, you're immediately able to see his love of music and passion for teaching in the faces of his students." In 2015, Randy was honored with the Crystal Apple Award, a testament to the kind of practitioner he is and to the contributions he's made to the teaching profession and the students of Pasco High. Thank you, Mr. Buer, for making the music come to life for so many of our students. Judy Church. Judy Church has been with us for 26 years as a teacher. Her days begin at 6:30 a.m. Her 16-page color-coded lesson plans are intentional and organized, and her connections to her students and their learning is evident. That's a quote from one of the many positive evaluations that Judy Church has received during her 26 years here with the Pasco School District: "The first nine at Captain Gray Elementary, the last 17 at Chess Elementary." Her focus had been primarily on third and fourth graders, and her dedication to their success has been praised by many supervisors over the years. Judy also helped to implement the Save One Student Program, which focused on building relationships and meeting the needs of students in need. In 1995, she was honored with a Staff Achievement Award. Current Robinson Elementary Principal Wendy Manthi once shared this thought about Judy: "Watching Judy teach is inspiring each and every time I see her. She is undoubtedly the most dedicated, enthusiastic, and focused teacher I have ever worked with." Thank you, Judy, for sharing that dedication with our students and for inspiring them to do their best every day. Susan Clapper. Susan has been a paraeducator in special education with us for 29 years. Susan Clapper spent nearly 30 years helping students at Pasco Schools, 29 to be exact. Her career with the district started in 1988 as a special services aide at Captain Gray, followed by a year as a special education aide at Longfellow. In 1991, Susan found her PSD home when she moved to McGee Elementary, a place where she would stay for the next 26 years. She was praised for her work in the resource room and the care that she took with those students. She also spent several years helping out with playground duty and working as a crossing guard. Her colleagues often commented that the students enjoyed working with her, and teachers often requested her for their classrooms. They praised her sensitivity and the connections that she made with her students, who would often share details about their lives with her. One supervisor shared this praise for Susan, saying that Susan goes above and beyond to help whenever and wherever she is needed. Her services are invaluable. McGee Principal Wendy Leckel-Polster described Susan as a phenomenal lady, a hard-working, high-quality, true professional who really cares about the kids. Thank you, Susan, for your hard work and your dedication to our students. Glenda Cloud. Glenda has been with us for 31 years. Doing what's best for our students, that's the guiding principle that Glenda Cloud has followed for the last 31 years here in the Pasco School District. From that very first class of first graders at Livingston Elementary in 1986, through her years as an assistant principal, and then through two decades of service as a district administrator, doing what's best for the students has always come first. As a teacher at Livingston, her supervisors admired her ability to connect with her students and described her as a teacher whose talents were unrivaled. Her strength as a calm and level-headed leader first became apparent when she moved to Emerson Elementary to serve as an assistant principal, later transitioned to the Special Services Department to serve as an assistant director. Her loyalty and dedication to the PSD family continued into the new millennium as she served as Director of Employee Relations and Director of Human Resources. Her strongest connections to her colleagues may have come, though, when she took on the roles of Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and finally as Deputy Superintendent. In those roles, Glenda served as a supervisor and evaluator for many of the principals who now lead our elementary, middle, and high schools. More importantly, she provided dependable and committed pillar of support for many of these administrators who have grown up in our organization. A diligent attention to detail was also on display as Glenda played a key and instrumental role recently as the district opened our three new STEM elementary schools during a period of tremendous growth for both the district and the community. Glenda, your calm, level-headed leadership will be missed, along with your quiet but steady approach to the work of educating our community's children. Thank you for your service to Pasco Schools. Marilyn Davis. Marilyn Davis is a Longfellow Longhorn through and through. Her career with the Pasco School District started in 1991 when she accepted an offer to teach first grade at Longfellow. She taught first grade for seven years and was commended for her work in helping her students achieve test scores that were far and above any other classes at her level. In 1998, Marilyn made the shift to third grade at Longfellow, a move that was designed to recharge her batteries. In 2005, she took on another new challenge, a third-grade, fourth-grade combo class, and stayed with that classroom configuration for four years. In 2009, Marilyn made one last move at Longfellow up to fifth grade. Her colleagues often praised Marilyn for her quiet and organized classroom, where her students are aware of her high academic and social expectations and work hard to fulfill them. Thank you, Marilyn, for your decades of dedication to the Longfellow Longhorns and your efforts to go the extra mile to help all of your students be successful. Colleen Doyle. Colleen was a teacher with us for 27 years, teaching mostly kindergarten, first, and second grade. Andy Eads. Andy's been with us for 15 years. Andy Eads has been teaching Pasco students the secrets behind capturing moments and documenting history for the last 15 years. After spending more than 20 years as a professional photographer, Andy accepted an offer to teach photography at Pasco High School in 2002. Over the years, Andy's classes have always been popular and full of students. In fact, many of Andy's students over the years have entered photography contests and won big awards, a sure sign that Andy was definitely doing something right. Andy spent seven years at Pasco High before he was selected to serve on the planning team for Chihuahua High School, a tribute to his dedication to being a school leader. Andy moved over to Chihuahua in 2009. He's been there ever since, guiding hundreds of students through his photography classes while capturing images from assemblies, concerts, dramatic productions, and graduations. Over the years, Andy earned high praise from his colleagues, who admired his determination to take teaching seriously and putting all his energy into doing well. Another colleague added that Pasco School District is fortunate to have Andy as one of our teachers. Thank you, Andy, for spending the last 15 years sharing your tremendous talents with our students. Hugh Fulton. Hugh Fulton was a teacher with us for 22 years, for the last two years alongside his wife Lynn Fulton, who has been a teacher with us for 14 years. Both of them finished their careers at Livingston Elementary after several years at McLaughlin Middle School. Cindy Gallegos. Cindy has been a teacher with us for nine years. She spent 19 years before that in the education system in Vancouver, Washington. Sarah Garth. Sarah's been a bus driver and food service worker with us for 17 years. Rosa Gonzalez. Rosa has been a translator and interpreter with the Pasco School District for 16 years. Linda Gregg. Linda has been a teacher with us for 13 years, focusing mostly on our youngest students. Rosa Guajardo. Rosa has been a bus driver with us for 28 years. That's a lot of early mornings. Diane Hart. Diane Hart's been a teacher with us for 22 years. Diane's career with the Pasco School District is actually a two-part story. In part one, Diane spent nine years serving as a Chapter One aide and special services assistant. Part two began in 2004 after she spent four years teaching at St. Patrick's School. Like others we've mentioned tonight, Diane's career focused on Pasco's littlest learners. She spent five years at Angelo Elementary, teaching kindergarteners and first graders. In 2008, she moved to Livingston Elementary to teach first grade, and that's where she's been ever since. Diane's classroom has earned many kudos from her colleagues, who have called it an enjoyable place to be for students that provides a rich learning experience. Others have praised Diane for her determination to be an effective teacher who expects her children to be successful learners. Her students leave her classroom with a quality kindergarten experience. And then there's this from former Livingston Principal Susan Sparks. "Thank you, Diane, for being one of the most amazing teachers I have had the honor to work with. Thank you for making positive imprints on the lives of so many children. I couldn't have said it better myself." Thank you, Diane. Shannon Higgins. Shannon has been an art teacher with us for 19 years. Pam Johnston. Pam Johnston has been a fixture at Longfellow Elementary since 1984, but her tenure actually began a few years before that. She spent seven years working as a substitute teacher in Pasco before accepting a full-time position to teach at Longfellow. She's touched the lives of thousands of Longhorns through the years. She spent time teaching first grade and sixth grade, even helped with the migrant summer school in the 90s. She's spent the last few years at Longfellow teaching fourth graders. Pam has earned praise for the relationships that she develops with her students and the expectations that she holds them accountable to. I'll share this quote from one of her supervisors: "Pam develops positive relationships with her students, celebrating their successes while encouraging each of them to work to their potential. When you walk into her classroom, the environment is one of high expectations with a sense of community. Pam has always taken the stance of being a learner herself. I appreciate her hard work and dedication. Thank you, Pam, for always pushing our students to reach their full potential." Diane Kostoff. Diane is a special services secretary with us. She's been with us for 27 years. When Mary Lopez started working in the Pasco School District in 1987, Ronald Reagan was president, Three Men and a Baby was the number-one movie, the Sonics were still in Seattle, and Mary's starting salary was $8,430 a year. Thankfully, teaching salaries have made a significant jump since then. Mary's PSD career has included several stops, including Markham Elementary and Longfellow Elementary. During her time as an elementary teacher, she's worked with kindergarteners, first graders, and reading recovery students. In 2003, Mary made the move to Ochoa Middle School, where she focused on English language arts and ESL classes. She spent seven years with the Rockets before making another move, this time to Pasco High. Mary has been at PHS since 2011, working with English as a second language students at the school. Over the years, Mary has earned some high praise from her colleagues and supervisors, including these words from Pasco High Principal Raul Satal: "Mrs. Lopez's students have access to hands-on learning on a daily basis. She's very organized and has high expectations for all of her students. Thank you, Mary, for setting those high expectations for your students and then working with them to make sure they achieve them." Margaret Macon. Her friends know her as Kay. She's been a food service worker and bus driver with us for 15 years. Blanca Martinez. Blanca Martinez has been a bilingual tutor and teacher with us for 10 years. And for Blanca, when it comes to working for the Pasco School District, she can't stay away for long. Her first stint with the district started in 1983. She spent five years with us, working as a bilingual tutor at Longfellow and Captain Gray. During that time, she was commended by her colleagues for her ability to help staff members communicate with parents. Blanca left the district in 1988, but returned in 2001 to work as a tutor again at the East Pasco Education Outreach Center. The following year, Blanca worked as a tutor and substitute at McGee Elementary and also served as a sub during summer school at Stevens Middle School. In 2003, Blanca moved over to Longfellow Elementary, where she spent the year teaching first grade. Blanca left the district for a second time in 2005. She moved to Prescott, where she spent seven years teaching kindergarten. But in 2015, she returned to Pasco once again to serve as a bilingual kindergarten teacher at Emerson. And this past year, she's served as a substitute in the district. Thank you, Blanca, for your dedication to our students and the community. Nancy McKeever. Nancy was a paraeducator in special services for 26 years. Her career with the Pasco School District technically started in 1988. She got her foot in the door by serving as a substitute playground aide and crossing guard at Longfellow. In 1990, Nancy was hired on full-time as the crossing guard there. One of Nancy's first evaluations hinted that there was much more in store for her. Her supervisor simply wrote, "Nancy is capable of much more than just helping our students across the street." Indeed, she was. In 1992, Nancy started working with children in the resource room at Longfellow, wound up spending the next seven years working with students as a special education teacher's aide. She was praised for always being willing to go the extra mile to help with students, parents, or staff. In 2001, Nancy moved over to Stevens Middle School, where she would spend the next 15 years working with kids as a special services paraeducator. During her time at Stevens, her colleagues commended her for being student-centered, as well as being an advocate, friend, and guide for her students. In fact, she made such a positive impression on her colleagues that she was highly sought after by teachers to serve in their classrooms as a classroom assistant. Thank you, Nancy, for your more than two decades of service to our students and to Pasco Schools. Virginia MacLeod. Virginia MacLeod joined the Pasco School District in 2007 after spending more than two decades teaching in the Moses Lake School District. During her tenure here in Pasco, she has taught language arts and history at Stevens Middle School. She's also served as an English language development teacher at Stevens, helping students whose English is limited become more proficient. She's wrapping up her PSD career after spending the last four years working with ELD students at Chihuahua High School. Connecting with her students has always been a priority for Virginia, and her teaching style has earned accolades from her colleagues. One supervisor wrote this: "When entering her classroom, it is clear that she has strong connections with her students and that there is an atmosphere of encouragement and support. Students are willing to take high risks in her room and work diligently to reach individual and grade-level goals." Thank you, Virginia, for encouraging your students to take risks and celebrating their Marcy Miller. Marcy has been a teacher with us for 40 years. And these days, it's hard to find anyone who has stayed with an organization for 40 years. Let's take a trip in the Wayback Machine one more time. When Marcy Miller started working with the Pasco School District in 1977, Jimmy Carter was president, Star Wars was the number-one movie, the Portland Trail Blazers were the NBA champions, the Sonics missed the playoffs. Marcy's starting salary was $7,261. Bless your heart for sticking with us through those early years. Over the last 40 years, Marcy has focused much of her time on Pasco's littlest learners. She spent many, many years teaching kindergarten, first grade, and second grade at Captain Gray, Frost, Longfellow, Emerson, and Angelo Elementary Schools. She's also worked as a reading recovery and leveled literacy intervention teacher at Angelo and wrapped up her PSD career holding that role this past year at Robinson. Her passion for helping students has not gone unnoticed by her colleagues. Angelo Assistant Principal Eric Christensen shared these words: "Marcy always shows great interest in the students that she works with and loves coming to school to help students grow in their reading. She does such a great job encouraging her students with kind words." Thank you, Marcy, for helping to plant the seeds of learning in our youngest students and then nurturing them and encouraging them along the way. Catherine O'Larry. Catherine was a teacher with us for 29 years. Elizabeth Ortega. Elizabeth was a teacher and instructional coach with us for 39 years. Dick Powers. Dick was a speech and language pathologist. He spent the last nine years with us. Shereen Reeser. Well, making sure that Pasco students made it from their doorstep to the classroom safely has been Shereen Reeser's top priority for the last 28 years. She started working as a bus driver in 1989, and since then, she's traveled several thousand miles over Pasco's city streets, as well as the county's rural roads, safely transporting students to school and then back home every morning and afternoon. In 1999, she shifted roles and became a special needs driver, working with high school students, elementary students, and even younger developmentally-delayed students. She earned kudos from her supervisors for her ability to work well and be successful with all of them. She's also commended for her commitment to safety and to always doing what's best for the kids. In 2008, she shifted gears again and took on a country route, which always meant a little more adventure when winter weather rolled into town. In 2015, she switched back, though, and wrapped up her PSD career as a special needs driver this past January. Thank you, Shereen, for always being willing to go the extra mile to make sure that our students safely arrive at their destinations. Robin Ryan. Robin Ryan has been a part of the fabric that makes up Pasco High School for the last two decades. She spent 20 years as a special education teacher at PHS and has also served as the department's chair at Pasco High. Her commitment to her students has been evident since day one, and her colleagues have noticed as well. One of Robin's supervisors offered this praise: "It's a pleasure to see so many special education students actively engaged in productive learning in one room at one time during a single instructional period." Robin's commitment to her students at Pasco High is even more impressive when you consider that she commuted to work from the small town of Lowton, just outside Walla Walla, every day. An interesting side note: she also lived in a teepee for a while. After one evaluation, Robin shared these words about her admiration for her job. She said, "It's been a privilege to work at Pasco High School with such outstanding staff and administration. I am truly fortunate." Well, thank you, Robin, for your dedication to your students. We are the ones who are fortunate. We've had you with us for all these years. Scott Salisbury. When school starts up again next fall, Pasco High School will be missing one of its most valuable resources: auto mechanics teacher Scott Salisbury. Who will students and staff turn to now when they need advice about cars? In all seriousness, though, Mr. Salisbury has been a fixture at Pasco High for the last 37 years. He's served as the Chair of the Industrial Arts Department and helped to establish the direct credit automotive agreement with CBC, which ensures alignment to CBC's curriculum and allows students to transition to the school's program after graduation. He's also been a soccer coach and a master teacher, mentoring many new teachers over the years. His program was also recognized as the Regional Program of the Year in 2003 by the Washington Technology Education Association. But this quote from former CTE Director Chris Martinson probably does the best job of showcasing the impact that Mr. Salisbury has made on the Pasco community: "When I'm out in the community at an auto repair facility, people often ask me if Mr. Salisbury is still teaching at Pasco High. When I tell them that he is, they often give him credit for offering one of the best courses they ever completed in high school. That is a high compliment to you, Mr. Salisbury." It certainly is. Thank you, Scott, for your decades of dedication and commitment to our Pasco students. Sandy Smith. Sandy Smith's tenure with the Pasco School District started in 1996. She's been involved in the teaching profession for more than 45 years. She started her PSD career at Stevens Middle School, teaching sixth-grade math. She stayed at Stevens for three years before moving over to New Horizons High School to teach vocational education and applied math. Over the years, Sandy's played a vital role in helping our New Horizons students meet their math requirements for graduation. During her time at New Horizons, she's also helped with the new teen parenting program and was in charge of the student store for a time. Over the years, Sandy's received kudos from her colleagues for her ability to motivate her students beyond what they believe they're capable of. One of her supervisors shared this: "Sandy is a lifelong learner who strives to bring all she knows to the classroom. She has a place in her heart for all of her students." This year, Sandy was chosen by the New Horizons seniors to be the featured speaker at their graduation. She started her speech with this: "If you're waiting for a famous quote or a theme, forget it." From there, she simply spoke from the heart, encouraging the graduates to be ready to set goals and face new challenges and changes. She also encouraged them to further their education, to practice unconditional and tough love at times, and to never lose their drive. Thank you, Sandy, for never losing your drive to help our students exceed their expectations. Karen Van Claver. For the last 38 years, Karen Van Claver has been making sure that Pasco students are ready to leave the safety and security of Mom and Dad's house and move out into the real world. Karen has been a family and consumer science teacher since 1979, back when they still called it home ec. For 20 years, she taught financial literacy, foods, and interior design classes at Pasco High, before moving to Chihuahua in 2010 to teach similar classes there. Over the years, she's served as the department chair for family and consumer services. She's been a National Honor Society advisor. She's been involved with Junior Achievement, and she's also been part of the TPEP Committee and helped her create training modules for staff members. She also developed and introduced the interior design course that she's taught over the years, and most recently has been active with the Pasco Specialty Kitchen Advisory Committee. Karen's teaching style has earned praise from her peers. One supervisor noted that Karen's relaxed manner, love of teaching, and wonderful sense of humor come shining through in her classes. They also remarked about her ability to form personal relationships with her students and her desire for all of them to be successful inside and outside the classroom. Thank you, Karen, for your tireless dedication to making sure that our students are ready for the ever-changing 21st century world. Linda Lee Vansel. Linda Lee was a teacher with us for 27 years. Her last position was at New Horizons High School. Linda Woodall. Linda was also a teacher with us for 25 years, focusing on first graders, and second graders and third graders. Pam Wheatley. If you've attended any sort of musical concert or assembly at Livingston Elementary over the last three decades, then you've witnessed some of Pam Wheatley's handiwork. Pam's career as a music teacher at Livingston Elementary started way back in 1983. Since then, she's organized hundreds of exceptional performances for assemblies, special events, and concerts, and helped thousands of students find the inner musician inside all of them. Her classes are always a favorite with students, and she's earned praise from her colleagues because she demands so much of herself and her students. Her joyful love of music shines through in each lesson, and many have boastfully claimed that Pam just might be the best music teacher in the state. She did earn a Staff Achievement Award in 1999 for her efforts. Former Livingston Principal Susan Sparks had this to share about Mrs. Wheatley: "Pam and I worked together for over 30 years, first as teaching colleagues, and then when I was her principal for 15 years. Her number-one priority was always the students. She strived to provide opportunities for students to excel in singing, drama, and playing instruments. But her influence went beyond the classroom. She taught students confidence, perseverance, and hard work, and she made memories for students that will last a lifetime." Thank you, Pam, for making such a Thank you, Pam, for making such an incredible impact on the lives of our Pasco students. Apparently, we had a couple of late arrivals. Cha Amack is here. So, Cha, would you like to come forward? Keeping our schools clean and operating smoothly has been a top priority for Cha Amack for the last 26 years. She started her career with the Pasco School District in 1991, working as a night custodian at Twain Elementary. She stayed at Twain for eight years before transferring to Stevens Middle School in 2000. Her stay with the Tigers was short-lived, though. In 2001, she moved to Livingston Elementary. Soon after, she took advantage of an opportunity to apply for the head custodian position there. In fact, she was so well-liked at Livingston that a group of kitchen employees wrote a letter of recommendation for her when she applied for that job. She got that job and has been a part of the Livingston family ever since, a total of 16 years. Her supervisors often praised her for keeping Livingston clean and continually adjusting to the ever-growing student numbers, which ultimately meant more portable classrooms to clean. Thank you, Cha, for your dedication and commitment to providing a safe and clean environment for our students to learn. Diana Baker is here as well. Diana Baker joined the Pasco School District in 2006. Before that, though, she spent 14 years in the U.S. Army, and then spent several years serving as an adjunct professor for Regis University in Colorado, teaching computer information technology and management classes. Diana spent nine years with the Panthers at McLaughlin Middle School, teaching computer classes for 7th and 8th graders, before transitioning into 8th grade English Language Arts and History classes. In 2015, she moved to McClintock STEM Elementary, where she served as a librarian and tech teacher. As the librarian at McClintock, Diana successfully adapted her instructional skills to serve students at all grade levels. She also worked to establish a partnership with the Mid-Columbia Libraries, and has worked diligently to establish a system that allows students and staff there to access the library's materials. Thank you, Diana, for helping to prepare our students for the 21st century world. Those are your retirees for 2016-2017. How about one more big round of applause for all of them? Now, retirees, we need you to stay here for just a moment for a group picture, but the best part is that we have food and refreshments for everybody to enjoy once we get that picture taken.